Fifth. To order. First item on the agenda, we have two items on the agenda this evening. First item on the agenda is approval of the sale of bonds and notes. And I asked Mr. Davidson to come up to the table on that agenda item. Before we hear from Mr. Davidson, Mr. Nelson is not here and he was our clerk. A clerk is required to execute this. So I'm going to ask if there's a motion to make Mr. Matthews clerk of the board.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's for tonight only.
That is for tonight only, or well, we do a reorganization next time. So however long you want.
Be available at that meeting.
That's correct.
So, but yes, thank you.
Great, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm coming before the board this evening for a special meeting of the board for the purposes of awarding the sale of bonds and the note. The reason that the board has called this special meeting is because of the way the timing was, we could not execute a sale in time for your last scheduled meeting for this for this year that is ending with the town election. However, because of what's going on in the interest market rates and interest rates are creeping up, we wanted to make sure that we could lock in $10 million that we knew that we had to borrow long term into as lower rate as would be possible. We had that sale today and hence why many documents which members who have been on the board for a number of years are familiar with, and I'll walk you through them in a few moments. But all these documents were delivered to you, including my summary to you today because the sales actually happened today. So with that, Mr. Chair, the first part of the news is prior to the sale of a bond, we meet with the rating agencies to get an updated credit rating, which is distributed to potential bidders. And I'm happy to report that the town did maintain its AAA rating. That was reaffirmed on March 31st by Standard and Poor's. We had met with them via conference call on Wednesday, March 23rd. As noted, we went gave an overview of the town's financial picture, both in the past and present. They, of course, were interested how the town was able to keep its finances in order and deliver services under the COVID-19 pandemic. So there was a lot of discussion relative related to that that we discussed. We also gave guidance, which we're assuming is going to be comparable to last year, where fiscal '22 will rest in comparison to fiscal '21. We anticipate it'll be comparable to fiscal '21. We are seeing improvement in local receipts, but there are other local receipts that are stagnant in part because of what's happened with the economy due to COVID-19 and supply chain issues. A long way of saying automobiles, which generate motor vehicle excise, one of the largest classified local receipts, is not as strong as prior years. And its recovery is not as quick because not as many people could purchase cars and get them registered in time for the excise tax bills that were issued this year. But on the case of a meal's tax in hotel motel excises, that has shown a substantial improvement over last year. In fact, our revenue target for those two categories were hit at the halfway point. And that's part because we conservatively made it those because we did not know when the marketplace was going to open up that people would feel comfortable traveling and staying in hotels and such. That is starting to recover. So with that, we had our bond sale today. The town issued was issuing a $10,850,000 bond issue. We received seven bids for the bond. The winning bidder is a new name to us, but they've been around for a number of years. It's Piper Sandler and Company. They're out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. They came in with the lowest rate. And they offered a premium where they bid interest rates between 3% and 5% over the course of the 15-year loan, which had a gross interest of $2,484,000. But they offered a premium that's basically giving us back some of the interest that they were charging us of $899,848. Under state statute, we now are able to apply that premium to the bond proceeds. And what effectively happens is there's several things that need to happen. The bond has to be resized by applying the premium to the bond issue. But because of the bond issue is dropping, the premium drops. So there's a lot of calculations and rounding that comes into play by applying that premium that does several things. It reduced the actual bond issue to $10,115,000. The second thing, it reduced the authorizations by the amount of the premium that was applied, which was $735,000, which lowers interest expense and principal that needs to be repaid. And in the case of most of this bond issue is related to the to the public safety building project, which is excluded debt. That results in savings to the taxpayers. Those are amounts that will never be raised on the tax rate for them to pay. The other thing that the premium is used for is is to pay the issuance cost. Expenses for debt, as the board is aware, is not just the interest expense, but there's cost of issuance. We pay for a credit rating, Standard and Poor's. We pay for the marketing and for legal compliance. It's bond counsel, it's the financial advisors. We pay for some things as printing and documentation. So they'll be a little different, but sort of comparable to all the little charges that people see when they get a home mortgage. That always surprises them when they're at the registry signing the deeds and stuff. But the same here. And that's applied. There's a residual amount after we account for what we applied to principal and what we're applying to issuance cost of a little over $4,000. And what happens with that is it's reserved in it's reserved that it can be appropriated for similar purposes. Or, and there's been a change in the municipal finance law. Some of those changes you're seeing here tonight, for instance, the town clerk hasn't joined us. But one of the other things is de minimis amounts can be used for debt service just upon the authorization of the town manager. So we also sold the note, the notice for two months. And the purpose of that is temporary financing and we will pay off that note when it matures. It's $2,761,000 will be paid off in full on June 15th, 2022. And that's a combination of items that projects that are completed or nearly completed and their residual amounts had to be borrowed to close out the project. So that it's that the cash equals the expenditures. We had a couple planned pay downs that were incorporated into this, such as the public safety building and the Mitchell School restroom. The other thing is because some of our other projects were delayed or did not progress as quickly as planned. We did not have to borrow as much for certain authorizations. As a result, we're able to pay down $470,000 that we borrowed to finance the Emory Grover Designs. So that'll be paid down in June as well. So, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the note, we received three bids for that. We had a rate of 1.5%, a premium $579, which results in a net interest cost of 1.376%. And that's the basis of award to that, that's to TD Securities. So very good news, both on the note in terms of the interest rate and on the bond. However, as I noted, one year ago today, when, not to the day, but a few days apart, we had a bond and we had a note and the board approved those. And the true interest cost of the bond that we're seeking your approval for this evening is 2.464%. The bond that was approved for sale last year had a true interest cost of 1.485%. So you can see that interest rates are climbing and they're continuing to climb. And that's why we want to lock in as quick as we could and as soon as we could. And even on the short-term market where the net interest cost is 1.376%. The ban that was approved at that time, which which was approved, had a net interest cost of 0.5, a half a percent. So even short-term rates are climbing quicker than long-term rates. So, Mr. Chair, with that and with the with the documentation, we would be asking the board to approve a series of motions that will allow us to award the sale of the bonds to Piper Sandler and Company, award the note to TD Securities. And presuming that the board is favorable upon that, there's a series of documents that need to be executed. And again, because you haven't had an opportunity to see what these are, I will quickly just explain what each one is that will be signed this evening. They are letter coded. The first one, letter A, is the vote of the select board. This is a summary of the eight motions that the, but I apologize, the nine motions that will be voted by the board this evening. And this is the document that will be executed by by the board's action this evening of the clerk, which is Mr. Matthews. And that's just a restatement of the motions that the board will be taking action on. Attachment B is a signature, no litigation official certificate. This is just a restatement of what's being borrowed, how the money is going to be used, the fact that we use the premium to reduce the principal for the public safety building project and for the store main, that the that all the debt authorizations were properly approved by town meeting and all certificates and documents are being approved by those who are authorized to do so. This is a document that will be executed by the board. It's a document that's been signed by me as acting treasurer because I current treasurer was unavailable to participate in this sale. It will be executed by the town clerk tomorrow morning. And as acting treasurer, who is appointed by the town manager and according to the charter, the town manager also has to sign that document attesting that she did indeed appoint me to be the acting treasurer today. The next document, the thickest by far is the tax certificate. It's identified this C. This, there are several things that this does. This is a test, both by bond counsel and actions of the town, that the fact is that the bonds that are being issued are tax-exempt bonds, tax-exempt notes. And that we will do diligence to make sure that we do not cause them to go from non-tax being tax exempt to be taxable. And there's a lot of its definitions. So there are pages and pages, but they're mostly definitions. But it's basically telling us, you're borrowing the money. You're borrowing the money for these purposes. You are going to spend them down according to the IRS spend down regulations. And this is one of the things the board has heard me talk about in prior times, about arbitrage and such. And that's why we don't borrow all the money for a project at once. Because if you don't spend them according to the to the required timeline, the IRS, best-case scenario, you're paying penalties to the IRS. The worst-case scenario, your bonds and notes become taxable instruments. So it's and it's a certificate that we're attesting to that we're not going to make that, we're not going to cause that to happen. Attachment D. This document is continuing disclosure annually. We have to update, there's a repository where any governmental entity that issues tax debt must update its financial picture annually and file a report with a repository that can be looked at by by anyone, but certainly by anyone who has purchased our bonds to make sure that nothing materially has changed that would be detrimental to our ability to repay the bonds. That's what the certificate is that we're attesting that we do that. And we do do that. Attachment E is just a paper copy of what the actual what the actual bonds would be looking like. And the bonds will be on fancy colored paper, but for this evening, they'll be executing just a white piece of paper. Copy F. These documents are showing how, what each bond's going to look like for each year. So this one little piece of paper is what's going to be turned in every single year that will get the borrowers their money back in each year. So in the in the first year, we are, the first year bond matures on August 15th, 2022, we'll be repaying principal of $3,225,000 plus accrued interest. Attachment G is also a signature, non-litigation official statement certificate. This is comparable to the one that I discussed earlier, which was attachment B. But this relates to the note where's attachment B relates to the bonds. And then lastly, significant events disclosure. This is a requirement that we will attest that if there are any significant events that would hurt our ability to repay the note, that we would notify the holders. This, of course, is a very short-term note, very unlikely to ever be a problem. But just similar that we had to do with the certificate for the bond, we have to do this for the note. And, Mr. Chairman, I went into a greater detail than in past and recognition that these documents could not be put up on the website because they didn't become available until now. And at this point, Mr. Chair and members of the board, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Thank you for that excellent summary and congratulations on that AAA bond rating. First of all, I think in your second grade, you'd be a great closing attorney with these documents and explaining instead of having to read through all of them. But thank you in all seriousness. I just, a couple of questions on E copy. I see that they're placeholders. If that's fine, I'm assuming they'll be filled in.
That's good.
Okay, great. And then moving forward as far as interest rates and your projections, I know we base our capital plan, we have certain interest rates you look at. Do you foresee any change? Not going to hold you too tight, but do you, something creeping up? We might have to adjust it in the future as we look at these projects?
Oh, Mr. Chair, as the board knows, I tend to be quite conservative because we don't know what's going to happen in a number of years. And these interest rates still fall under the financing summaries that I produce. And in fact, some members of the finance committee had asked me the same thing. And the answer is no, the interest rate assumptions, which I work with a depending how soon, between 6.5% and 7% for the long-term rates would be the same rates I'll use when I update them.
Great, thank you for that. Questions or discussions?
One is, I see that we're doing this for 15-year borrowing. Is there a reason for the 15 as opposed to a longer term?
It's, it's consistent with the way that we were planning our amortization of debt. And we borrowed a series of bonds. We have one that was 25 years and this one is 15 years. So that our retirement debt is, which Standard and Poor's mentions, is ensuring that more than 50% of the total debt outstanding on one day is paid down within 10 years. So this helps balance it out.
Thank you. And I'm kind of, I'm looking at our guests that we have here. This must be awfully tough on people that don't spend a lot of time with the accounting. Does this make any sense to you?
Easy to control.
Thank you.
Basically, we're borrowing a lot of money, $10 million. We're getting a break on the interest because they accelerated getting all the paperwork in before the rates go up further. The town gets a break on its borrowings because of, we're status as a town, it's actually, the bonds are actually tax-free, which means the people that are going to buy them pay get less interest and we get to use the money for things that we hopefully get to do with the town. But we had to pay it all back. And not all of us are going to be here during the 15 years if this is going to be paid. In fact, some of you guys might be homeowners and taxpayers by the time we get done. So there's a mountain of paperwork that has to be completed to say that that's going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great, great job, great job.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to say thank you for your continued conservatism. And we'll continue to talk about it every time we look at what the future looks like. But when, when it comes in, it's actually a really nice thing to have happen.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that the board will take up at your reading is our recommendation for funding of the Emory Grover. And one of the reasons that we are proposing to use free cash is because of the interest rate increases we've already seen in those that are becoming forward. So it's another conservative measure that they're recommending in terms of saving taxes.
Makes sense, thank you. So we have, as we stated, nine motions in front of us. I guess the best way to do it is to read them aloud because we just received this today. So what I will do is I will read them aloud, ask for a motion and then second and then go forward from there. So first, is there a motion moved at the sale of $10,115,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds of the town dated April 14th, 2022, the bonds to Piper Sandler and Company at the price of $10,933,239.75 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on August 15th of the year's in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rate as follows. 2022 amount $3,225,000, interest rate 5%. 2023 amount $510,000, interest rate 5%. 2024 $510,000, interest rate 5%. 2025 $510,000, interest rate 3%. 2026 $510,000, interest rate 5%. 2027 $505,000, interest rate 5%. 2028 $485,000, interest rate 5%. 2029 $485,000, interest rate 5%. 2030 $485,000, interest rate 5%. 2031 $485,000, interest rate 5%. 2032 $485,000, interest rate 5%. 2033 $480,000, interest rate 4%. 2034 $480,000, interest rate 3%. 2035 $480,000, interest rate 3%. And 2036 $480,000, interest rate 3%. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I just want to interrupt you in the motions. A lot of people heard that I was saying the net interest cost is 2.464%. And then they're saying, well, he's reading all these fives and threes and fours. How is that possible? The reason is, is remember, some of the interest that we will be paying, we're actually giving back the money that they gave us. This is that premium that we mentioned earlier. So our true out-of-pocket cost is less than the 3 and the 4 and the 5%. And hence, that's how it comes to be 2.464%. That will help our listeners understand.
Yes. I know you went over that, but thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion to approve the sale of a $2,761,000 1.5% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated April 14th, 2022 and payable June 15th, 2022, the notes to TD Securities USA LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $579.81. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there a motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale, a preliminary official statement dated March 29th, 2022, and a final official statement dated April 5th, 2022, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Is there such a motion?
So move.
So a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there a motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 29th, 2022, and a final official statement dated April 5th, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Is there such a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there a motion that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion that the acting town treasurer, the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing insignificant events, disclosure, undertakings and compliance with SE Rule 15C2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Is there a motion that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms, the town treasurer and bond counsel deemed sufficient? Or such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes to comply with relevant security laws.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have two more. So far, we're doing great. Is there a motion that any certificates or documents related to the bonds and the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail and a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Is there a motion that each member of the select board, the town clerk, the acting town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect provisions of the foregoing votes.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you all for your patience. And now we have some sign.
There were two documents there. There were three. I guess I'm there. There are three to be signed there. That's correct. I'm like, there were three. It doesn't matter.
Hope the medium champ put some music over this. Oh, we're not, okay.
I don't know if we all can sing.
Don't ask.
Yeah.
How long has it been since you were treasurer, Dave? Twenty years?
Yes.
He's the keeper of the ten cia.
Town clerk.
Is ours a good old one?
Yes, an embosser.
David, you say one of the changes in the laws, the town clerk doesn't have to be here.
Mr. Chair, if you wish, I can touch upon the next.
Sure.
Agenda item.
We do that. Please.
What maybe call back during the winter months, the board approved the town manager submitting and the town treasurer completing the application for sewer rate relief, which is generally an annual event. And the town received for sewer rate relief from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I have to look at it just to make sure that I remember two hundred and eighty-three dollars. And to be applied the board had asked in previous years, because it is a small amount, whether it could be used to help just certain individuals and the state informed know that it has to be used to help all rate payers. And that was something that was reconfirmed by our town treasurer, Evelyn Finesse. And as such, the two hundred and eighty-three dollars would result in a credit of three cents per residential taxpayer upon the vote's approval. And you're acting in your capacity as as sewer, as water and sewer rate commissioners, where you set the rates and apply a credit. This chairman, the total distribution that the state made available to help cities and towns and districts with one million five hundred thousand dollars. The program used to be quite sizable back in the early two thousands where it was fifty-three, fifty-eight million dollars a year, which was certainly a much meaningful for rate payers. And with that, Mr. Chair, take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yes, we've asked that in the past and it's absurd now with this amount that we can't do something else with it. That's for higher powers to figure out in this board. Thank you for that information. Is there a motion? That the board approve a one-time flat sewer rate credit of three cents per account bill during the fourth quarter of FY twenty-two, reflect the state sewer rate relief money received from the Commonwealth. The motion is made by Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One question, is there any realistic prospect that this program is going to come back? Or is it just one of those things that remains to be seen?
It is a combination of certainly the legislature appropriating funds, which has not been a priority of his nor of the governor. So that's one aspect. The other aspect, the rate relief comes when you have debt related to sewer projects that you didn't receive other financial assistance from. So instance, debt that's financed or the MWR zero is not eligible. Now, Mr. Chair, you may note that that bond that you just approved, there was a sewer portion of that. And it was for six years because debt of that's held for more than five years is eligible. For sewer rate relief.
We'll see, maybe, maybe some homeowners in the topic next year.
Make some phone calls. All right, great. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you all. Have a good evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent, that concludes our evening. Good night. Thank you, Mary Ann.